Sir, would you sit in the back row with your recording device? You're kind of in the way there. People walking down the aisle. Thank you. All right, seems everyone's here. We're calling the City Council meeting of Tuesday, August 19th, order at 6:02 PM. We have all been fed and watered. Thank you for your patience. At this time, we'd like to stand and offer the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the law of the United States of America. To the Republic which stands on nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all. On Texas law, a pledge of allegiance to the Texas state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. Please be seated. Okay. Item one, public comments and announcements. At this time, we would like to listen to any member of the audience on any subject matter, whether or not that item is on the agenda. All comments are limited to a maximum of four minutes for each speaker, shall be limited to city business or city-related business or matters of general public interest. And shall not include any personal attacks or abusive language. All public remarks shall be addressed to the Chair. Comments should not be directed toward individual council members, city staff, or other members of the public. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, members may not discuss or take action on any item that has not been posted on the agenda. When your name is called, please come to the podium and state your name and address clearly into the microphone before making your comments. And I think the microphone is still on. Yes, I believe the microphone's still on. Thank you. Okay, we have four citizens today. The first one is Aaron McGuire.
How you guys doing?
Yes, sir.
Maybe I'm gonna get used to this eventually. My question or concern is about the Hot Tax Committee. I agree that I think the former committee should be reinstated. The reasons for them being off just didn't pass the smell test. And now that we have the Freedom of Information Act, which showed some emails that were sent out, and said not to give any names, so I won't. But that makes me think it's more vindictive, and I don't believe that's right. I don't know what Kelly Stewart had said or done to be removed from the committee. And then whatever happened, then the whole committee was disbanded, which I think was an injustice. To the people that worked on that committee, they were doing a good job from what I've seen, what I've heard. So I really think that we should look at reinstating them and putting the Hot Tax Committee back the way it was. So that's all I really had. Thank you very much.
Sorry, microphone. Thank you for speaking. Joe McCall.
Joe McCall. So one of the things that I'd like to talk about is the streetlights on Nassau One. They have been fixed. It looks really good. Not the whole thing, but most of it. So it looks good. It was two years in the making, but it looks a lot better. The land, when you come into Seabrook on Nass Road One, right near El Lago, it looks a lot better. But at about 30 yards back, they obviously don't do anything back there. But the up close, up to the road, looks a lot better. The Hot Tax Committee, I saw that video here from there. What it is, I think, was violated was Title 18, subsection 242, deprivation of rights under the color of law, and also Title 18, subsection 241, conspiracy under those same rights. If you actually read it, it's pretty serious about that, so it's a big deal. Next is the pier. I've heard that someone has offered to build the pier down at Pine Gully for $150,000, yet the city is saying, no, we're gonna go for the bid for $2.2 million. If that's true, that's not a good look. If someone can build the pier for $150,000 or $2.2 million, even if you get some funds somewhere or matching or whatever, that doesn't make any sense. So the street signs along 146, Hialeah Drive, and Miramar Green Street, they're still not there. We make signs, we can make those. I don't think you need to wait for Tech Dot to put them there. I just think you can put those signs up. Because Marvin Circle has one that we've made right down the street from that. So I don't know why we don't have one for Hialeah Drive and Miramar Green. Miramar Green's been gone for a long time. Weeds along 146, some of them are nine feet tall, and the other ones are at least six. I talked about this before. When you're trying to bring businesses in through EDC, and they see weeds along your city, it just doesn't look good. So it needs to be addressed. I noticed that the folding flags that were right over here are still not back. And then the fence at Carruthers, I listened to that audio from the meeting a few meetings back, and there was talk of it was four feet off and just a few feet. It's seven feet at the start. It goes to 11 and then 22. And if you add up the land, it totals up to about a half an acre of land that you'd lose. And you also lose the connection to get to your electrical right there in the kind of the mini little ditch where the telephone poles are. So again, that doesn't make sense. And it doesn't cost. The fencing can be reused. You take it off, roll it up. The poles can be cut down. You put new poles up in the correct place, and then just use the fencing again. So again, and someone, like the bid was like 18 or 22,000 for that, that's crazy. The fence doesn't cost that. So I'd like to see those things get fixed. And I think some of these items, like the weeds, the signs, and the fence at Carruthers, and those flags that go on the wall here could actually be fixed pretty quick. I don't think that would be that big of a deal. So anyway, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Terry Soans.
Terry Soans, 529 Baywood. Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
My first topic is Carruthers also. Short little history. When Drew passed away in '03, they were looking for a buyer. They found one at 1.4 million. But the city came along, and the Parks Department, and they created a bond for 2.5 million to buy it. Great. They put it on a bond. It passed, raised taxes a little bit. Okay, what do we do with it now? They turned it into an event center to begin with. That failed. And they've gone through several iterations with it. And then Hurricane Nicholas came along and kind of put it to bed. The building was taken down. What do we do now? Well, I want to commend the Parks Department and Jesse for, first of all, that fantastic community garden we have that feeds people, feeds the soul, feeds pollinators. And I don't think they get enough credit. And now I'm really looking forward to the coastal garden. And I'll be one of the first to volunteer. If you've never been to Mercer Arboretum in spring, you really should go. We don't have that much land, but it could be a mini Mercer. People go there all the time. It is wonderful. So I'm really looking forward to it. And I hope the city gets behind it, and I hope citizens get behind it. The other topic, I'm watching the clock. The other topic is, I went to a standards board meeting a few weeks ago because my husband and I were interested in a property that was going to be on the agenda. And I have to tell you, the presentation by Sean Nick, Alana, and Laura was so detailed and so professional, it was impressive. I had follow-up questions after that. I called. They all called me. We had good discussions. And they can tell, well, they won't tell you because they're too nice. But I have been a pain in their side from time to time. And they have always responded, and I have learned from them, and have learned to be more patient and learn the process. So I think they need to be commended for the work that they do. That's it.
Thank you, Terry. Okay, and last, we have Robert Jeter III.
Good evening, Seabrook City Council. The city of Seabrook is a beautiful city with so much waterfront, green space, and wonderful people. I like having reasons to come down here and collaborate with your citizens. And some of the records request documentation I've seen FOIA used interchangeably with TPIA. FOIA is the Freedom of Information Act that deals with records requests from federal agencies. TPIA is the Texas Public Information Act, which governs state municipal records requests, Chapter 552 of the Texas Government Code. Toma is the Texas Open Meeting Act, which governs how state municipal meetings conduct themselves and the rules they must abide by in Chapter 551 of the Government Code. I understand that council cannot respond to me at this time, which is consistent with the Texas Open Meetings Act. However, I do have a few questions citizens should be asking council, and in turn, council should be asking the mayor in Seabrook EDC. The position of Seabrook EDC Director was recently filled by the former Pasadena EDC Director, who on a personal level, I find to be a nice guy. What was the timeline of the hiring process? Who applied for the position? What were their qualifications? Who were their references? Under what conditions did they leave prior positions? Why did the estimated cost of the Pasadena Convention Center overseen by the Pasadena EDC jump from 50 million to 135 million? Where did that $85 million jump come from? What happened to the money already spent prior to any foundation being laid? Are there any proposed or ongoing projects in Seabrook being handled by the EDC here that might require a fall guy? Thank you for your time, council.
Thank you. All right. Item 1.1, Mayor, City Council, and/or members of the city staff may make announcements about city or community events.
All right, our upcoming events. City offices will be closed on Monday, September 1st, in observance of Labor Day. Emergency services and waste management will operate as usual on those days. Our one event we have here is Kids Fish. It's a catch-and-release fishing tournament just for kids in grades pre-K through 5th. And that'll be happening on Saturday, September 13th, at 8:00 a.m. through 10:00 a.m. off on Main Street. I got a website here if you're looking for more information on that. That is seabrooktexas.gov/kidsfish. For more information, you can check that out. And to learn more about any other upcoming events, you can always visit seabrooktexas.gov and follow any of our social media here on City of Seabrook.
Thank you, sir. Any other events we missed? Thank you. Item 1.2, you may have noticed we moved this agenda item forward so that the citizens can hear all the good things that we're doing in the city, instead of waiting till the end. City manager update and report to city council on various items that require no action, including Seabrook Boards and Commissions, transportation projects, and City of Seabrook CIP projects.
Mayor and council, on your boards and commissions, at the last council meeting, you heard back in regards to the newly named Parks and Trails Committee. They had a meeting on August 7th, and you heard and considered their recommendations for the Governor's Community Achievement Award. So staff is working back with Tech Dot. It would be a Tech Dot-run project, so we're getting back in touch with Tech Dot Representative to see how we can move that forward and get that on a bid project to get that carried forward. So again, that project was proposed to have some kind of art feature at the 10th Street exit, and we're looking into next steps. Your EDC Corporation met on August 14th. They heard an incentive request by Pom Doras that was tabled at that meeting. At the same meeting, your EDC also considered their budget for the fiscal year '26. There was one modification made when they got into their CIP, but they ultimately approved a $1.9 million budget and looked to, on their CIP plan, to continue to be a funding partner to the city with $500,000 going towards the enhancement and reconfiguration of Main Street, and then $296,500 towards Gateway and Directional Signage Project. And finally, they approved the renewal of the membership to the Clear Lake Chamber of Commerce. As mentioned in public comment, the Building and Standards Committee has published some public hearings, so they'll be meeting again in September and October. And this is in regards to properties on Waterfront Drive, as well as an individual property on Baywood. Planning and zoning will meet on August 21st. We've been reporting, and they're at the final stages, to hold a specific public hearing on an amendment to the code to allow shipping containers for above-ground and below-ground swimming pools. So that will be coming over to city council in the near future. On our capital improvement projects, we are continuing to make progress on a interconnect project. And again, I reported this is extremely important to the city to have redundancy in the waterline system. So off Old 146, we are projecting to do a street closure, hopefully with the county this upcoming weekend. The lane closure will be to set a vault along Old 146, and that will complete that interconnect project. So we have successfully completed that first interconnect, which is tremendous. Seascape Waterline Project, this is also another large project, and we're now projected to complete in October. Right now, the project is undergoing bacterial testings on all the new lines, and we still have some tests that are out and not getting approved at this point. So they're continuing that until everything is clear. Wastewater projects, we heard tonight at our 5 o'clock meeting on Park Concepts for the old wastewater treatment plant site on Main Street. The city is concurrently working with our engineering firm right now for the demolition of everything that you see vertical, less the lift station. So the most prominent piece that's closest to Main Street that will have to stay, will have to have some kind of aesthetic wall that will go around it. But the remaining of it is getting placed into a bid project, and our engineering firm is working diligently to get that reviewed, that packet, over to city staff. So we're hoping to have a more defined RFP timeline within the next month or so. Pine Gully Force Main, this is a resiliency project for your wastewater. We have an exposed wastewater line that's pretty old lying across the Toddville Bridge. This project was scoped to replace that exposed line and bore it underneath Pine Gully. The staff is working with Army Corps of Engineers right now, and they're completing their 15-day notice that was up. So once that's complete, we can move on to the next phase. Lastly, our facilities project. We did a social media post and reported to you that we had the brand-new Brummerhoff two-seat restroom installed. We had it completed. And after our last meeting, that Friday, we did successfully open that restroom. Pelican Bay Municipal Pool Facility, we met with our designers. The layout of the two new pools is coming along very well. Some of the probably challenges that we still have in front of us is we have allotted a little money for the buildings that are on that site. So we've taken a little bit more time and liberty to have the designer come back out to the site. Those buildings, if you've ever toured them, are very original. And so in our concept drawings, we addressed the, what I'll call lipstick, but those buildings need some dental work. So we're gonna work on the dental work next. Our facilities for the EMS expansion project is coming along. So we are finishing the contract right now and still on target to start the EMS expansion at the beginning of September. As mentioned, we have a big CIP board. We will get a confirmed groundbreaking ceremony scheduled with council and get that one kicked off. But we just need to get the final revisions to the contract. Carruthers Garden, East Track, also kind of mentioned earlier this evening, that is reported that our contractor has started to mobilize, bring out the equipment to the site. So we should start to see some activity later this week at the Carruthers site. East Meyer, this is the street that is also on your action items tonight. We are proposing for council to look at the acceleration of going ahead and moving into design. If that's approved tonight, we'll move to the next phase. We had a question on the stakes that are up and down East Meyer. That was some initiation of getting that property surveyed. So that would be part of this project if approved. North Meyer, we are still waiting on county response. I've been reporting a couple of times on North Meyer. So we were awarded a design grant with Harris County, and we've done a kickoff meeting and a walkthrough. And so we're awaiting next steps with the Harris County consultant and engineering firm. Lastly, the fire station generator. I think there was a question on this. This is a generator that we were awarded through an HMGP grant. And we had dreamt of the grant long before the actual grant or the generator actually went out at the site. So it was timely that we actually were awarded and getting a new one. In the interim, Public Works has worked with the fire station and emergency services to hook up a mobile generator. But early September, that is anticipated to be delivered and hooked up. Any questions?
Yeah, thank you. That was pretty much the whole meeting, I think. Thank you, Gabe. Item two, presentations. 2.1, presentation of the quarterly report from the Seabrook Volunteer Fire Department Chief. Douglas, will you make the report for him?
Good evening. Hi, good evening. Thank you for volunteering as well. I appreciate that every time. I want to introduce the folks that came with me today. Assistant Chief Aaron Bristow, and the two fire captains, Theo Presswood and Lindsay Price. So I appreciate them coming up here to support me. I did not write a single thing down, so I'm going from the heart and from memory. Is that all right? Very happy to report that we don't actively recruit too often. We find that the long-term volunteers come to us. And we have had an influx of volunteers that have joined. And we have a junior program. I'm very excited to say we have four juniors that have joined this summer. And a lot of times, when those words spread through the high schools, we get four to six people. And sometimes we build careers out of them, up to and including my own son, who is now 32 years old in the fire service. So that's very exciting for us that we have a younger audience that has come into the fire department. I also speak with a peer in Nassau Bay, and he has the same thing going on in Nassau Bay. So that's very exciting. We've had three people graduate firefighting one, which is a state-certified test. So those are huge accomplishments for volunteers. Those are huge time commitments. And for them to accomplish that says a lot about all of us here, that they're giving their time to the city. So we really appreciate that. The fire department continues to stay very busy with public community events, from egg drops of Boy Scouts to church requests to spray down people to city events. And it's very taxing on the volunteers, but they are continuing to push through, which is amazing to me. And we do have a consortium of folks, if you will, that just love public events. And we're very blessed for that because our calendar's hit probably once or twice, probably three to four times a month with these events, which just continues to ramp up from HOAs and churches and all these things. So it is very important because, you know, fire trucks, red fire trucks, especially as American is apple pie. So we try to fulfill all those requests, and we're very successful at it. So I'm saying this to tell you how much I appreciate the volunteers. So I brought some pictures because everybody likes pictures. Can we roll with them? We did put them in order. Perfect. Just a couple of things we've done the last quarter. This is a back-in assignment. That's actually a La Porte Fire Station. I just always like to show how we have good relationships with our neighbors. They had a banquet, and they asked us to back in so all their people can go to the banquet. So there's an example of us sending people to them to watch their city for four hours. And somebody took a picture of that. Roll on. Our relationship with the port has always been strong. They now call it the Port Houston Authority versus Port of Houston. And this is an actual incident right here at Bayport. That is a ship fire. Now, you don't see any smoke or fire, but they had a generator room. Now, you don't see any smoke or fire, but they had a generator room fire, and the Port Houston Authority Fire Department does not have aerial devices, so they depend on us, Baytown and LaPorte, for aerial support, just like we depend on them for mutual aid and training support as well. So that relationship continues to grow and flourish. That's an actual incident. We can keep on rolling. There's some of our firemen on the ship who are about to make entry into those confined spaces where the generator room did have a, a fire incident. It did not burn the ship up or burn it down, but, you know, as you can imagine, the smoke and all those things, they have to get in there and remediate all that. So that's a very good picture. That, coincidentally, two weeks later, Chief Bristow here had arranged training with them. So that's us training with our aerial tower at the Port of Houston, Bayport, right here, and working on their cranes. So that's good for them and good for us. There's another picture of training. There's another one. Please keep rolling. So we have lots of incidences here that I'm sure get lots of Facebook and social media interest. That was pretty entertaining, but I should put that picture in there in the sense that we live in a very real suburb and a very big city here. That's a trailer fire full of plastics, started probably in the brakes and the chassis there, but when people want to know why 146 is shut down for, well, in this case, almost six hours, there it is right there. Because of the hazardous materials in the plastics and stuff like that, all that has to be remediated, and that takes a lot of time. It fell on the shipper. They did a great job, but it takes a lot of time. So I just want to show you, these are some of the incidences that we're responding to. There's another picture of the fire. There's all the product that had come out. That there is the boat that we really appreciate that y'all are looking forward to purchase for us next year. I did not make that meeting. It was a workshop meeting, and we're leaning towards the public safety funds to spend for that boat. We're replacing the existing boat, as you know, it's 25 years old, with that. That's a picture probably off their website in their pamphlet. I brought our boat captain here with us, because she is a professional captain on the, I don't know. On the water. There you go. And, and so I brought her with us, in case y'all had any follow-up questions. I heard Andy C. did a very good job in presenting and answering the questions you had, but if you had any follow-ups or anything that you wanted to ask her, I brought her with us. I said, hey, do you mind coming up here, just in case you had any follow-up questions? And I think the very last one, if you can open just the one PDF that I think, the one that says "all," is the one I prefer. I can't see that from here. Year-to-date statistics, I had our admin pull this. That would be from January to July 31st. We've run 584 incidences. You can see the breakdown. You'll have that in the screens in front of you, correct? Okay, great. The numbers I always like, yeah, please roll the page down. 63% of them are EMS calls, and the number I always like to throw out there is those seven, the top right where it says seven, that's how many times we documented we're in the back of the ambulance. And the other one is three times we drove. As I've told you before, that really matters to that patient, and that really matters to that patient's family, that we're there to help support Robert Turner's operation and Kevin Rogers' operation for EMS. And we're able to put medics in there and help supplement that stuff on these very critical calls. So although there is 368 EMS incidents, those 10, they really made a difference. And a lot of those incidents, too, would tell you when our ambulance is busy and transporting. We have Nassau Bay or LaPorte coming in. We get there, and we go first and start establishing patient contact and things like that, as we've discussed. And I wanted to also state that our relationship is really good. I'm a direct report to Gail. Gail's communication with me is wide open. These two are in the fire station with us, Kevin and Robert, and as any professional relationship should, our communication is wide open. We all understand that government processes take a while to get things fixed and remediated and all that, but we do appreciate your support for the agenda item tonight, which is the repairs of the bunk room and that air conditioning system. That's presented problems from insulation and mold and different things. So with that, I am done, and unless you have any questions, I'd be, feel free to ask any, and I'll do the best I can.
I just had a quick question on the junior program that you mentioned. I don't even know the whole details, but I'm, I've never heard of that before. I'm just curious a little bit more about it. Is that purely a high school age kind of thing, or is it younger?
16 or 17. We actually are insured through the VFIS, one of the Volunteer Farmers Insurance, Texas. I joined at 16. Were you 18 or 17 when you joined?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. It's been a very successful program. We're one of the very few fire departments do it anymore, but they still exist out there. And we, you can actually respond on apparatus with us. They are not, they are not allowed to go into interior firefighting and such things like this, but they can roll hose, pull hose, do exterior firefighting with us, they train with us, the whole nine yards. We're even allowed to send them to some fire schools. Of course, as time has gone on, some of the fire schools have backed off and want you to be 18, but there's been a couple, I can't remember. Sergio, he was 17, yes. And so a lot of them will let you go to the school at 17, but you have to test when you're 18. But I joined in 1987 at 16, and we still hold it today, which I'm very proud, because a lot of fire departments have gotten rid of that, as you can imagine in this day and age, so.
Fantastic. Anyone else? Thank you all for your service. Thank you for your report. It was wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Good job.
All right. Next, we have a presentation, 2.2 Presentation of the Citywide Sign Ad Hoc Committee Recommendations Report to City Council. Is Russell gonna give that, or you? Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Wherever you're, wherever you're comfortable. If there's, I think there's probably a presentation, so you might want to do that.
There it goes. Hey, everyone. Russell Hatfield, I'm the chair for the Citywide Signage Committee. Members, raise your hand. There we go. There we go. Okay. Just wanted to get in front of you this evening to mention some of the recommendations that we're going to be making, some of the phasing that we're going to be trying to roll out for some of the citywide signage. Now, this is going to include the entire city of Seabrook. We are doing some focusing on the Old Seabrook District, the Parks area, and also doing some cleanup and some restoration of some of the damaged or outdated signs that need to be fixed up, just for some aesthetic purposes. But anyway, so overall, the signage visions and goals, so it's going to be, we're trying to bring that coastal character back to the city, trying to do some logoing, a little more marketing, and within our citywide signage for Wayfair, for directional, as far as that, and also with just using banners for some of the existing infrastructure that we have. So for Phase 1, we are looking at an immediate need to do some gateway entry signs and also some logo signs, logo banners on some of the existing light poles. We went back and reviewed some of the consultant work that was done back in 2017, and we took some of that data, and then so that we could capitalize on that and use some of that existing information and data that was done. We think that will save costs, but it will also expedite the process. So, but we also noticed that there was a bunch of light poles around town. They even go into the Pasadena area down Main, when you go down Nassar Road 1. These light poles could use some nice logoed banners. If you take the City of Webster, League City, I think even Nassau, or, yeah. Yeah, Nassau Bay does it as well. It's a, it's a really nice aesthetic. They'll put some logos, and then they'll even put like what's in that area, like shopping or markets or restaurants and things like that. So we thought that would be a really good touch. And with the existing light poles in place, we think that would be a pretty cost-effective start, so. And then the other one is gateway and entry signs. Some of those are directional signage. One example is right there at the corner of 146 and Nassar Road 1, where you have Nassar Road 1. We would like for some things to be corrected, like Nassar Road 1, this direction, Main Street this direction. A lot of people don't even know Main Street is the other direction when you cross over 146 from Nassar Road 1. So that's just one example. Other stuff we have is identifying some of the different districts within the city, the Parks District, the Old Seabrook District, some of the areas around Nassar Road 1. We've even had talks about putting some more permanent structure to hang different types of signage over Nassar Road 1 for different events we do throughout the year, but have a structure in place that's set, and then we can change the banners or the signage out on that structure throughout the year. We think that would be a really good long-term investment, but also cost-effective as well. So, and then the other need is the, the maintenance needs. Yes, there we go. So we can utilize some of the city for that, but also, if you take a look, here's a great example of one of the city signs. The top logo in the Seabrook logo is the nice white color, and then you've got the, where the sun has damaged the directional signage below it. So there's a lot of those in the area that need to be cleaned up. Any questions?
Can you scroll back up to the older signs, down a little bit to the ones where there's a bunch of them?
There we go.
That's why we need a sign thing. That is why we created this. I just wanted, you went by it quick, but it's important because it's our branding, so.
Yeah, that's, that is one of the key points, so that's going to be in Phase 1 as well, too. Yeah, the logo banners in this are our key priorities.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Actually, go back up to that rendering. That's a good rendering of the park. We've looked at many different options, I guess you could say, different designs, and we tend to like this the best. We, we're still teetering on whether we use one logo bird or multiple birds. Like here, you have the egret, and the other side of the pelican. It just depends on what district you're in, if you're a park, if you're in the Old Seabrook District, if you're in the fish market area, those kinds of things. So those are still some roadmap items we need to discuss and bring back to you guys, but just, that's the discussion we're having right now. Next steps is we would like to get a consultant in place. I did mention we had some documentation from a consultant that did a full booklet in 2017. We want to take that and use the existing data from that. We think that will save a lot of time, a lot of money, bringing a consultant to then take that, do what they need to do to make sure we meet requirements from TechDOT, the county, the city, all those different things, meet all the different code restrictions, or code and permitting.
Hey, Russ?
I'm done.
On that, that sign committee, wasn't that the one that we, the $83,000 that was presented to EDC, and we wanted to have some corrections done to it, or was that, is it done? Have we already done it? And do we have to, okay.
No, $93,000 was introduced to EDC, and they approved it. It came to council, there was no action, and then stakeholders was created.
Okay, great, thanks. I was trying to remember how it all went down. Okay. So you guys want to reinstate that and get it done? Okay.
Yes.
I think we feel that, as Russell mentioned, by utilizing the 2017 plans that we've already paid for, and just improving on those, that we can save a fair amount of money just on that portion of it.
Yeah, there's a lot of really good content in there, and we've got a lot of really good ideas ourselves from the meetings we've had, so.
I mean, it's still gonna be a big project over time, but we gotta start somewhere.
So then we're not going to need to spend the $93,000, because we have something already in place? So with that $93,000, are we thinking that pricing's going to go down for the consulting?
I will go back and we'll solicit a proposal based on the scope that comes out of this report, if council accepts a report, and then we'll be able to see, given the hours and the scope, what we're talking about.
Okay, thank you.
And then I think we take, because we had some EDC, as we mentioned earlier, in the CIP, so we can utilize that extra money to start this project and get it going.
Yep.
Anyone else?
Yep, anyone?
I do have some more questions. So when we get started, when will we get started, once we've made our decision, and how long will it take before it's finished?
The timeframe for completion is still TBD. We don't know yet, because we still have some, we need to meet in front of the consultant. I think we were talking high level, what, two years initially?
Yeah, the original, the 2017 plan, where we put the $1 million on your CIP, that consultant did what you saw in that 5 o'clock meeting. They did an estimate, and they put a timeline together. So it could be phased. The $1 million was if, that was, that was not actually even gateway signs, so that was just all signs throughout the, so you would have to phase it, understand what the cost estimate is from a consultant, and then figure out which phase you want to tackle first. Each phase, you would have to go to draw, it's very similar to the park project. You go to the next step, which is you gotta get design drawings to go out for fabrication. So I mean, I'd guess until we get a professional on, but at least, you know, 18 months to get things moving.
I think that's why we decided that the pole banners would be quick, and, you know, a couple of months, get pole banners up, and we can get some branding started, and we can start working on these other signs that are already existing while this whole project is, I think.
Okay.
Tackle the low-hanging fruit.
I was just, I know that if no one's thinking about it yet, they'll ask later, so I just wanted to clarify and also get in my head how it's gonna look.
Great question, because I, one of the things, too, is if the citizens and the business owners start to see this take place, and they see the changes that we're making, you tackle that low-hanging fruit in the phased approach, and they're, they're actually going to see the results, and it's gonna, it's gonna make them feel better, yeah. Absolutely.
Anything else? Thank you, Russell. Thank you, committee, for your time.
Your time.
Sorry, turn my mic on. All right. Item 3, Consent Agenda. Item 3.1, Approve the Minutes of the July 30, 2025, and August 5, 2025 City Council Meetings.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Councilmember Hammond makes a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilmember Sanford seconds. All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you. Item 4, Words and Commissions. Item 4.1, Consider and Take All Appropriate Action on the Appointment to Fill the Vacancy on the Economic Development Corporation for Term to Expire January 1, 2026.
Move to table. We still have an interview to conduct.
Councilmember Hammond moves to table until after the interview process. Councilmember Sanford seconds. This is, since we're just moving to table, I think we don't, this is not a discussion item, we just vote on this. All in favor? Opposed? Want to oppose, Councilmember Cervantes, motion carries. Thank you. I assume we get on that quickly, so thank you.
Thursday.
Yes, sir. All right. Item 5, New Business. 5.1, Consider and Take All Appropriate Action on the Reappointment of Steve Gillette to the Harris County 196 Subsidence District Board of Directors for a two-year term, ending January 31, 2027.
Move to approve 5.1.
Councilmember Hammond approves. Councilmember Tolett makes the second. Do I have any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? All unanimous? Thank you. The motion carries. Item 5.2, Consider and Take All Appropriate Action on Consumer Price Index Adjustment to the City Sanitation Rates Effective October 1, 2025, with Waste Management of Texas, Inc. Tell us the good news.
All right. Mayor and council, I've pulled up the attachment to this agenda item. We are in a five-year contract with Waste Management, and part of that contract, as you can see on Section 9.01, is a CPI adjustment. So in the language, they go into detail that they'll grab the CPI index annually and see if it goes over a certain threshold. We've meet that this year. The proposed CPI would be 3.71. Good news is, we get a slight reduction on the fuel for a net adjustment of 3.31. This is in line with our contract, and staff is recommending moving forward.
Move to approve 5.2.
Councilmember Hammond makes a motion. Councilmember Tolett, seconds. Any discussion? All right. In that case, item, all in favor, raise your hand. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 5.3, Consider and Take All Appropriate Action to Approve a Contract Between the City of Seabrook and GovWell for Permitting, Zoning, and Code Enforcement Software for Fiscal Year 2025, 2026, Including a Non-Apropration Clause in an Amount Not to Exceed $39,000 for the First-Year Fee and Implementation. Nick, you'll be given a presentation.
Getting with council, this is, this agenda item is to come before you. We were offered early implementation of the software that you've received presentations on that would, the funding would be addressed in next year's budget, but we're looking for approval to be able to move forward to sign a contract now. There wouldn't, we, the funding would be handled in next year's budget, but we would be able to actually start implementation with your recommendation.
Is this an improvement of the existing software?
Simply put, our, this would be a night-and-day difference over our current software, but this is looking to, with the city moving forward with encode and update to all of the rest of the city's software, unfortunately, the current building software is no longer supported. So if we weren't moving forward with implementation of another software, we would be stuck with the current software without. the current software without any ability to upgrade it or move forward. So it would stand alone as a complete separate system and server that we have to maintain.
Move to approve 5.3.
Councilmember Hammond makes a motion. Councilmember Sanford makes a second. Do we have any other discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, raise your hand. Opposed? And the vote is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Nick. Item 5.4, Consider and Take All Appropriate Action on Resolution 2025-22, Support for Phase Two Lower Clear Creek and Dickinson Bayou Watershed 203 Feasibility Study. A resolution to express support for Phase Two Lower Clear Creek and Dickinson Bayou Watershed 203 Feasibility Study to culminate with the creation of a list of projects and funding options to address flooding and its devastating impacts.
Move to approve 5.4.
Councilmember Hammond.
Second.
Councilmember Sanford, second. Thank you, guys are quick. Is there any discussion? This is just a resolution supporting the next phase in doing a feasibility study to determine the effects of flooding upstream that would have on Seabrook and mitigation efforts. Not requiring any money or anything like that, just our support.
I would support a feasibility study, but I have got some great concerns about this project as it moves forward.
Sure.
Anyone else? Okay. Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? None? Unanimous? Thank you. Consider and Take All Appropriate Action, item 5.5, pardon me. Consider and Take All Appropriate Action on the Approval of a One-Year Extension of an Inter-local Agreement Between the City of Seabrook and Lakeview Police Department for the Use of the Seabrook Jail Facility and Telecommunications 911 Operator Services from October 1, 5, to September 30, 2026, with one-year options to extend annually and authorize the city manager to execute.
Move to approve.
I have a motion, Councilmember Sessions, second. Councilmember Tolet, any discussion? All right. Hearing none. All in favor, raise your hand. Thank you. All opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Item 5.6, Consider and Take All Appropriate Action on Approval Proposal from Duplantis Design Group, PCDDG, for Professional Design Services on the East Meyer Paving Project, Seabrook CIP S26, in the Amount of $183,940 plus reimbursable expenses.
Move to approve 5.6.
Councilmember Hammond makes a motion.
Second.
Councilmember Tolet, second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? None? Unanimous? Thank you. Item 5.7, Consider and Take All Appropriate Action on a First and Final Reading of Ordinance 2025-16, Fiscal Year 2025 Budget Amendment Number Five.
Move to approve.
A motion to approve by Councilmember Sesim.
Second.
Councilmember Hammond, seconds. Is there any discussion? This has to do with the fixing of the drywall and so forth at the fire station.
It's got to get done.
Yeah, there, sorry, ma'am.
No, I just said it's got to get done. I mean, we've got to move forward with it, to me.
Okay. Anyone else? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you. Let's get it done. Item six, Discussion, Item 6.1, Discussion of a Possible City Event in Recognition of the U.S. Navy During 2025. Whoops, sorry. 5.8, I skipped my own committee. Item 5.8, Consider and Take All Appropriate Action on the Acceptance of the Citywide Ad Hoc Signage Committee Report.
Motion to approve 5.8.
Second.
Councilmember Tolet makes a motion. Councilmember Hammond, seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? None? Unanimous? Thank you. Item six, 6.1, Discussion of a Possible City Event in Recognition of the U.S. Navy During 2025 Fleet Week on November 5, 12, 2025. Angela, would you like to speak to that, or Gail, or somebody?
Well, I'll start. I sent council a supplemental, and I apologize. I didn't really think it'd generate on this one. In short, many council members have approached us, and we've been talking about Fleet Week that's come into our region. After some brainstorming with some council members, we wanted to put this forth from the staff's perspective. We've gotten a couple of cost on some of the ideas of, one, being a sort of a festival on Main Street, but having the star feature of a drone show over the slough area. So that is one option. We've been in contact today with Harris County and La Porte and understand a little bit more about what's going to go on in the region to find where we would be able to plug and play the best. So we've got some connections there that, they've also kind of lent to November 11th. So the city, as you recall, usually has an event on the 11th for veterans, and so they're going to look at seeing if that would be a good fit. The drone show in the supplemental that you got is just sort of a tentative timeline that staff came up with that would be something to the effect of doing something in the realm of our normal procedures, which would be an honoring event of some sort. We could have some food trucks, close Main Street, and then work into the evening with possibly music entertainment, and then go into the drone show. So that's just sort of a brief tentative idea and timeline based on council's brainstorming ideas at this point.
Go ahead, Angela.
Yeah, so this is a suggestion that I, that I came to Gail and brainstormed, and Lexi has done a good job working on this as well. I think it's great. My only question, I know, Gail, you mentioned Tuesday, and we talked about that yesterday. I think that if we were to bring an event, I think Tuesday would still not bring outside commerce or outside traffic as far as the heads and beds. I think, and also people that live in Seabrook, that might be kind of a struggle for the ones that have kids that have to get up in the morning, ones that have to wake up. So I just suggest that we, I know there will be other events, but that we look at doing it on a more formidable day, like a weekend, Friday or Saturday, so that it can actually get the attention that it deserves. But I'm excited that we're bringing something back to the citizens.
Could I, Gus?
We had, I managed to find the person who is the co-chair of this entire event for the county, and we had the discussion this morning, and she, I don't think got back to us, but she was meeting with the City Houston mayor today, who's driving all this. She's the one who suggested that Tuesday, that's the night before departure, and she felt like there'd be enough service members who would have leave that evening, but who would still need to get back to their ship in time for departure. The City of La Porte, as you know, has many activities scheduled for the previous weekend, which she totally mentioned, and maybe we could jump into some of that as well. So that, she's kind of driving that, but she has not got back to us. She was supposed to meet with the mayor today, but we told her we were open to doing whatever we could do to help.
Yeah. Yeah, we kind of were a little bit late to the game in this, so I know a lot of other cities have already done plans and gotten actually officially on the books for the event. So I'm glad that you've spoken with her. And I'm not hardline no, but I just, Tuesday's a little difficult for families and...
She was, I think, in my conversation with her, just for the public, they segregate, not the right word, but the, you know, thousands of military folks that are going to be here, basically senior officers, junior officers, senior enlisted and enlisted personnel, and then they are more or less assigned to different things around the city. So there is a group that is unassigned on Tuesday evening.
Oh, okay.
And so that is what kind of fit into, she just kind of come up with that as we were talking. So we're just trying to do what we can to support our troops and to make this happen.
Yeah. Yeah. I think this, the drone show is a good segue to maybe a future standing event in the city of Seabrook, and that's kind of, when we discuss celebrate Seabrook, this is what we all kind of wanted, is something more grandiose and special and back to Main Street, hopefully. So I appreciate the work on that. Thank you, Gail.
Okay. Anything else?
It's pretty exciting stuff, so we're working on it.
Item seven, Routine Business. 7.1, Presentation of the Monthly Financial Report for July 2025. Mike? There you are, sir.
Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight, we'll go over the actuals through July. Our revenues in the general fund, we're currently underperforming on the revenue side to a tune of $766,000. Shortfalls there are property tax collections and sales tax collections and building license We are forecasting a $6.3 million ending revenue. Our current expenditures are under budget by $1.5 million. This is largely due to personnel, cost savings, as well as services not being...
Fully executed. Overall, the health of our general fund...
Overall, the health of our general fund balance is looking to see $1.4 million return to the general fund, fund balance, which would leave us somewhere in the neighborhood of $10.5 million. Moving on to the enterprise fund. Revenues there again are under budget by $920,000 to this point. We're projecting $899,000 shortfall in revenues come September, end of September. Our expenditures are currently under budget by $777,000, and the forecast is just under $1 million. So our, our ending fund balance there is a healthy $2.3 million. Kind of the weakness there is the water, our water revenue collection, which is driven off of our water sales. So we haven't had to purchase as much water, so that makes up the, a large portion of the surplus in our expenditures. Hotel Motel Occupancy Fund is overperforming the budget. They're doing quite well, currently projecting $148,000 being returned into fund balance, so leaves us at a, ending fund balance is $688,000. EDC, again, they're, they're overperforming on the revenue side, just slightly better than their, the budget at $26,000. They have not fulfilled as many service projects, services or projects that they had originally budgeted to do. As y'all heard with the park presentation and some other things tonight, hopefully some of that will get going, but in the end, we are looking at a very healthy fund balance at $4.8 million. Last but not least is our crime district budget. Revenues slightly under budget, but, but doing, doing fairly well. Revenues are at $940,000. Expenditures there have been kept in check. They're under budget by $128,000, so we are looking at a healthy fund balance of $1.7 million. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, sir. All right. The last item, as Gail mentioned, we need to meet again, before I read this, we need to meet again when we get the HCAD final numbers in. Is everyone available next Tuesday, a week from tonight, at 6:00 PM to go over the budget?
Yes.
Yes? Yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Angela's checking.
Possibly.
Possibly. Sure. Yeah. Item 7.2, Establish Future Meeting Dates and Agenda Items.
Mayor and council, your next scheduled meetings, then, will be August 26, I believe, is next Tuesday at 6:00 PM, and your next regular council meeting is September 2 at 6:00 PM.
All right. There being no further business before this council, this meeting is adjourned at 6:59. Thank you all for being here tonight.